Is that good?
Keep going.
Keep going.
Testing. This is Randy. One, two, three.
That's good.
Ross Becker, microphone. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. And let me see if I can go backwards. 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4.
Is that good?
If I get it. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. You're not hearing anything. Well, I'll just keep whistling. How about the Andy Griffith theme?
There we go.
Okay. We're good.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome on a beautiful Saturday morning. Welcome to our ABC 6 News Post Bulletin Community Forum for the Olmsted County Board of Commissioners. I'm Ross Becker from ABC 6 News. And as I said, on this beautiful Saturday, we are here at 125 Live in Rochester. And we're glad you're with us online. Doing this online is really a great way for us to connect with you because you can watch it at your own pace on various different platforms. We're also going to be streaming this live on Facebook as well and on the ABC 6 News app. So there are various different ways where you can get the information you need to make, the choices you need to make in order to vote the way you want to this year. And of course, there's a lot of issues to discuss today. With me today to ask questions of these candidates is someone who I'm sure you're familiar with if you cover or if you follow government at all here in Olmsted County. And that is Randy Peterson of the Post Bulletin. Randy, thank you for being with us this morning. You're going to be the smart one in the room, trust me, on this one today. We have three half-hour forums this morning. One for District 7, then District 5, and then District 1. And we want to thank the leaders here at 125 Live because we have a great facility to have this in this morning. And there are people exercising outside. It's a Saturday morning, but as you can see, we are making it safe, too. We're social distancing, and this is all sanitized here. Unlike the answers that we're going to get, the room is sanitized. At least, we hope so. And Randy, there are rules, of course, for just about any forum or any debate. Hopefully, we're going to have more luck keeping to those rules than the moderators of the presidential debate had a couple of weeks ago or last week. So at the start of each forum, each candidate is going to have one minute for an opening statement. The order was determined by a draw just a few minutes ago. We'll get to that in a minute. And then Randy and I will ask questions of each candidate. Responses will be about a minute. And then if we think it's appropriate, there'll be 30 seconds for rebuttals. We'll see how that goes today. And when we have about five minutes left in each half-hour for each forum, each candidate is going to get about one minute for a closing statement in reverse order, of course, of the opening remarks. The ABC 6 News assignment manager, Jennifer Brito, is sitting over here to my left, and she has a bell. She is the timekeeper for us this morning. You'll probably hear the bell, maybe see her in the background. And she's going to try to keep us on track and keep all of you on track as well. So remember that. Thank you both for being here today. Randy, anything else you want to add before we get started with our first forum this morning?
No, I think you've covered it. The one thing to note for those people who might want to revisit this, you can find the videos both on the KAL website as well as the Post Bulletin website, and I'm sure they'll be on our social media platforms as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Randy. All right, let's get started. Candidates for District 7 is our first forum this morning. The incumbent Mark Tyne and the challenger Wale Aligbe. Now, if the timekeeper will start the clock. Mark Tyne, you won the toss. And go ahead and present your opening statement this morning.
Hi. I'm Mark Tyne. I'm your Olmsted County Commissioner for District 7. I was born and raised in Rochester. I live in Orinoco Township with my wife Jenny. We have three grown kids. I'm a fourth-generation waterwell driller. I'm president of Tyne Well Company, which has been serving Minnesota since 1893 drilling water wells. Prior to being elected as Olmsted County Commissioner, I served 17 years as Orinoco Township Supervisor and Chairperson. I'm in my 10th year as a Varsity Assistant and B-Squad Head Coach for the Pine Island Panthers. And I thank you for hosting this debate. Thank you.
All right. Let's go to our next candidate now for a one-minute opening statement. Wale Aligbe.
Yes. My name is Wale Aligbe. And coming to America at the age of 21, my journey was not an easy one. I had no access to financial aid or student loans, and I had to pay my way through college. And that involved a lot of sacrifice, hard work, and persistence. And basically, those experiences have helped shape some of my values as a professional, father, husband, and community leader. I've been married for 14 years. I have three kids. I currently serve as Director of Strategy Management Services at Mayo Clinic, Vice President of the Rochester NAACP, President of the Lacrosse Project Management Chapter, Human Rights Commissioner, a distinguished alumni, and a TED Talk speaker. And basically, all of this has prepared me for greater leadership within our community. My motivation is always service. Where can I serve next, and where can I put my skill set to help others? I believe we're best when we're one community serving together. And my goal is to make sure that Olmsted County is a great place for everyone to live and work. I want to make sure that we use our tax dollars to work in ways that fosters more trust in our community. So really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for being here today. Thank you for your service and your desire to serve, and it's really important for this community. So let's get started. Randy, you have the first question today.
Thank you. And thank you both candidates for being here. And we'll start with Wale on this one. The county has adopted the One Olmsted Resolution to address health, social, and racial equity goals. What do you see as the most critical equity issue that needs to be tackled?
Well, there is not one specific issue, Randy, because if you look at even affordable housing, that is directly related to even health disparities. And also, that also impacts law enforcement. So there is no real one issue. In my campaign, my top priorities are increased access to public health services and social services program, mainly putting people first. I also have affordable housing and diversity, equity, and inclusion. That's also a top priority. So I think those are the key things that I think that, you know, the county needs to focus on. And the One Olmsted tries to cover some of that, but I think we need a stronger strategic plan to do that.
Thank you. And Mark, the county has adopted the One Olmsted Resolution to address health, social, and racial equity goals. What is the most critical equity issue that needs to be tackled?
Well, I was on the Human Rights Commission when we approved that and brought that forward to the county board. And I'm proud that we adopted it as a county. I would say probably education, that we need to find a way to make sure that everybody's getting equal educational opportunities, to give them the opportunity to achieve their dreams and have success in life. I would say that's our number-one goal, is to make sure everybody has an equal chance.
Thank you.
All right. Go on to the next question. Randy, you keep me straight here and make sure I get the right question to the right person. I believe we're going to ask Mr. Tyne. This has to do with Rochester relations. Rochester is a big part of Olmsted County, obviously.
Sure.
So at times, relationships between the county commissioners and the Rochester City Council members, well, they appear to be strained. What would you do to improve communication and relationships with the county's elected officials overall?
Well, I think that's a good question. It's important. I have good relationships with the city council and the mayor. I've had four of the city council members and the mayor over to my house for dinner. I know them on a personal basis. I talk to them on the phone. I don't believe that any of us are better off by putting the other down or making things harder for them. We all serve the same people. And so it is important to me, and I'm working hard to provide good relationships and good service to our citizens.
All right. Mr. Aligbe, basically the same question. You've heard the stories. At times, relationships have been strained between the county and the city of Rochester. What would you do? What are your ideas to improve communication relationships?
Yeah. Sure. My approach in business or in the community is really community engagement. I think when you talk about the county, you know, having good relationships, the ability to have open, transparent communication, so making yourself accessible, definitely not compromising your values. I would definitely not do that. But looking for collaborative ways where, you know, where we can look for the win-win in every given situation. Having said that, you know, I think it's important to realize, we don't serve the mayor or we don't serve the city council members. We serve the people. And that's really where my focus is. And I think that it's really important for us to look at all the issues we have. You know, I talked about earlier that we have a lot of issues in the community. There's law enforcement and community relations. Those are, we're struggling in Rochester and Olmsted County. You know, you look at education. We have education disparities, affordable housing. Three years ago, Rochester was the second worst in the nation. So there's a lot of issues. So I definitely would not compromise on that, but would look for ways to collaborate and make it better.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy?
And this time, we'll go with Wale, starting. And what can a county commissioner do to improve a county resident's understanding of the role and value of county government?
We have to be more open, and we have to go to where the people are. It's really been amazing, you know, that I, as I run for county commissioner, people are asking, so what does a county commissioner do? Or I don't even know who my county commissioner is. I've heard that a lot, you know. And so there is a lot of opportunity for just community engagement and directly going to where people are. I think making sure that we're more accessible on social media. But then also, you know, I plan to have like quarterly touchpoints where, you know, I have forums where I can directly talk to people. So I think those are all that different avenues that we can do to make ourselves more accessible. And then also, just, you know, giving your phone numbers. I know Mark does some of that, but just making ourselves more accessible. But bottom line, though, is reporting back to our citizens. We don't have to wait for the election. We need to report back on the progress we're making, get into your ideas to make it move forward, so.
Thank you. And Mark, what can a county commissioner do to improve the county resident's understanding of the role and value of county government?
Well, in some ways, I think the county government is kind of like an offensive alignment. So when you hear their name, it's because they did something wrong. So counties work in the background. We help with prenatal care. We help to make sure that children are getting the proper nutrition. We do everything in the background. We're touching your life all the way to the end until we record your death. I mean, we are in your life more than the city council or city government all the way through, but we're doing so behind the scenes. So we're not out in front. And if we are out in front, it's probably because we screwed up. So it's good that we just, we've got a great county here, and we're doing great things for the people, so I think we're fine.
All right. All right, let's move on to the next question. And this may be one where there is a bit of a difference. Rochester Police, they have their issues and problems and challenges to deal with. The Olmsted County Sheriff's Department has those same problems. They're on the same table. So let me ask you this question. The county sheriff is an elected official who oversees that department. Is there a role for county commissioners to play in encouraging changes in the way that department operates? And if so, what changes?
Well, with our current sheriff, the way we're operating right now, I don't see massive changes that need to take place. I think that we would be in trouble if our elected county board started trying to micromanage the sheriff. The sheriff is an expert on law enforcement. He's running a very good department. If he wasn't, I'd be the first one to say so. But I'm not in the position where I'm going to tell the sheriff that he needs to change something when he runs a good ship. That being said, like I said, if he did something that I thought was wrong, our level of control is with the purse strings. We control the budgeting of the sheriff's department, so we could control him that way. But I think Sheriff Torgerson does a great job, and I'm proud of the work our deputies do.
All right. Mr. Aligbe, same question. County sheriff is an elected official who oversees the sheriff's department in Olmsted County. Is there a role for county commissioners to play in encouraging changes in the way the department operates? And if so, what are those changes?
Yeah, absolutely. I see there is a need, and tens are not kumbaya. I mean, you go talk to people outside, and people know that we have a lot of tension in the community. So I'll state this first. So I come from a family of law enforcement and military. I'm an American immigrant from Nigeria. My grandmother was a second female police officer in Nigeria. I have an uncle that has been an admiral. I have people that have been in the Air Force. So law enforcement is important to me, and I understand the value that they do provide. However, I'm not going to shy away with the issues we have. When you look at issues of the police and Olmsted County, the sheriffs, there is not trust with the minority communities. And my goal is for us to strengthen that. Ways that we can do that is obviously having positive collaboration with a sheriff. I'll definitely do that. But then when you look at chokeholds, you know, I've been a strong advocate against chokeholds, you know? I don't want it there at all. You know, I think that if we focus on de-escalation tactics, you know, if we focus on investments in community policing, if we focus on investments in making sure that we have more social workers, more so, that will help bring trust with our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the next question, again, we'll reverse order and start with Wale. In the 2019 Olmsted County Community Health Needs Assessment, identified financial stress as one of the top three community health priorities. How do you propose the county address this issue?
Well, I've been a business, small business owner, and my software company was actually mentioned in the INC 5000 in 2007. So we need to provide more support to our smaller businesses. And I think, you know, we need to look at ways where we can basically be more creative and create a more sustainable and prosperous environment for them. So it's really collaboration, looking for ways where we can ensure they have the support they need, and as partnering with the city, partnering with our local area folks, and also just getting ideas from folks. So the county plays an important role in just creating that right environment. So I'm definitely committed to doing that. And it's not just the county's responsibility, but for sure, you know, I understand the value for business. You know, that's the bedrock of our local economy, and we need to make sure that we treat our businesses right.
Thank you. And Mark, the 2019 Olmsted County Community Health Needs Assessment, identified financial stress as one of the top three community health priorities. How do you propose the county address this issue?
Well, we make that decision every year by deciding what our tax level will be. So I think we need to continue to be smart above our taxation so we're not being overly difficult for people to pay taxes living in this. So that's number one, and that's probably the most correct way. The other way that comes to mind is in our regulations, we need to be smart with them, not owners where we're punishing businesses and people unnecessarily with regulations and fees for services that are beyond what is reasonable. So what we can do to help the situation is keep money in people's pockets.
Yeah, and I'll just add, not a rebuttal per se, but then I think when you look at even increased access to public health services, that is also another way that we can make sure that people keep money in their pockets, and those important county services are expanded more, so.
Agree with that, Mr. Tyne?
I'm fine with that, but everything comes with a cost. So the more services we provide, the more taxes we have to levy. So you've got to weigh, and that's a big part of being a county commissioners. You've got a lot of things to come forward that you like, sounds really good, but then you're going to say, do I like it enough that I don't want to raise your taxes?
Yeah, and that's where the prioritization comes into play, you know, and I prioritize people first.
All right. Well, let's move on to another question because this one will take money, too, just like everything else takes money. It has to do with homelessness. And it's an issue that is sometimes hard to get your arms around. Would you support funding the creation and operation of a shelter for people facing homelessness in Olmsted County? Mr. Tyne?
Well, we essentially are right now, so I mean, we're on record of supporting it. I think the key is, and we had a national speaker that came in and talked, is that we want homelessness to be short and one-time. So we want to take care of the people that are homeless and give them the services they need so that they get back on their feet and lead a productive life and not need the services again. So whether that's mental illness that's leading to it, drug addiction, we need to get them the services. Every person has a human value, and we treat them with respect and dignity and try to get them on the path so they don't need the services anymore.
Mr. Aligbe, same question. Would you support funding the creation and operation of a shelter for people facing homelessness?
Yeah, I concur with Mark, but it's more than that. So when people talk about homelessness, so homelessness is one issue. Affordable housing is another issue, complementary, but you're not exactly the same. So the way we get people to not be homeless is by making sure that we have good educational opportunities. Taking care of discipline disparities would be a good way to start. Making sure that we provide really good, high-paying jobs. Now, the county does not control all of that. You have to partner with the city and businesses, but we can create that framework where people can be more productive. Diversity, equity, and inclusion. Increase in representation for minorities, for women, for everybody. So I think that if we can tackle all of those underlying issues, that that really helps with even homelessness and affordable housing. I mean, I spent a lot of time in my graduate study just trying to understand affordable housing. It's very complex, but there's a lot of things that we could do. You could look at even, you know, grants. You know, obviously, you could look at zoning, partnership with others, revitalizing our local economy and neighborhoods. So those are things that we can do to really address this.
I'm going to insert a question for both of you here. What about taxes? Would you increase taxes to take care of a homeless issue? Let me start with you, Mr. Aligbe.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it depends on the amount of taxes. But I think that when you look at community engagement, you know, I think, you know, let's have a referendum, let's bring that to our public, you know. But, you know, I think that people also need to understand that. This affects our health, too. So when you have people, and COVID is a perfect example. If you have minority communities that have COVID, that's affecting everybody else. So homelessness is all of our issues, and so I think we need to have a really good conversation as a community, and then we can go from there.
Mark Tyne, would you be in favor of raising taxes to tackle the homeless problem?
Well, I mean, every dollar we spend is basically a tax dollar, whether it's a county property tax levy, or a state dollar, or a federal dollar. It all comes from us, goes to a level of government, and then is spent. So we're already spending X amount of dollars on it. So the question is, do I want to spend more on it? I don't know. As Wale said, keeping people in homes is a big priority. Well, when I raise taxes, then rent goes up, and then they're more likely to become homeless. So it's a real balancing act.
Before we get to Randy, I just want to remind everyone, with about five minutes left, that's where we'll start our closing statements. So Jennifer, just let us know when we get close to five minutes left. Thank you. Randy?
Okay. And next question, I'll start with Mark. And I'll acknowledge that this is a project that is not in your district, but since county commissioners vote on all projects in the county. County commissioners, at least some, have made it clear that they would like to see a new interchange, exchange at the intersection of US Highway 14 and 60th Avenue between Rochester and Byron. But state funding for the project remains uncertain. A proposed modification, known as a J-turn, has been suggested to limit collisions at the site. Is the J-turn acceptable as an option until future funding is available?
If it was followed with a certainty of an interchange funding coming, then I would be in favor of it. If it's just to appease us and then push us back to the end of the line, then no, I'm not in favor of it. We need an interchange there. It's a very dangerous intersection. It's only going to get more heavily trafficked as community grows, and it's in the long-term plans to basically be the next ring of a West Circle Drive. So it is inevitable that an interchange will be there. So why do we risk people's lives now when we know it's coming? So I guess I'll qualify it. If we could put a J-turn intersection in there and come back in three years and have a true interchange, then yes. But if it's just to appease us and make us go away, no.
Okay, thank you. And Wale, the same question regarding the Highway 14 and 60th Avenue intersection between Rochester and Byron. County commissioners have said they want to see an interchange in there, but state funding for the project remains uncertain. Proposed modification, known as a J-turn, has been proposed for the site to limit collisions. Is the J-turn acceptable as an option until future funding is available?
Yeah, so to be honest with you, I'd have to find out a lot more because I'm not familiar with those details. But I will say this. So it's, you look at short-term benefits and long-term benefits. We don't, you never want to do a situation where, first of all, we need to make sure that we don't affect people's lives. So if the short-term solution is adequate, then we should consider that. But if it means we're going to spend more money where it's a short-term solution, then I'd be in favor of a long-term approach. I think it's also really important when we talk about just general infrastructure, you know, one thing that I advocate is the formation of a project management office. And counties like in Fairfax, they actually have an office where they make sure the products are executed on time, on scope, and on budget. And what that does is it actually helps our taxpayer dollars so that there's no loss of, there's no inefficiency, so to speak. So we have opportunities in Olmsted County to make sure that we have really top professionals to make sure that these projects do get done quickly and on time.
Thank you.
All right. The next question, we've kind of talked about the relationships between governments, and obviously, when it comes to money, that's an important issue. This one has to do with economic development. Let me start with you, Mr. Aligbe. What is the county's role in economic development? And how could the county fund increased efforts to attract and develop business locally?
Really appreciate that question. Lots of things that the county can do. And it's not the county's problem alone. It's, you know, that's where having good relationships or great relationships with the city, having great relationships with businesses and partners, nonprofit organizations, that's where all of that stuff comes in. But the county's role, the way I see it, is really to create that framework, that environment for sustainable growth. There are a lot of things that we can do. We can, we need to be also really strategic in this. And I have 20-plus years of project planning and strategic experience. We need to look at our rural areas, Rochester. How do we attract businesses that complement each other? You know, I've been public in terms of, we want to attract businesses that complement businesses and, you know, farmers in Orinoco, Pine Island, and stuff like that. We don't want people to cut and run. So I think bringing people in and also focusing on jobs, are we creating jobs? And also, are we retaining jobs locally? But the county plays a big role. Communication is a big part. Transparency is a big part, so, and I'm definitely committed to doing that.
All right. Mr. Tyne, same question. What is the county's role, from your point of view, in economic development? And how could the county fund increased efforts to attract and develop business locally?
Well, I don't know. Funding efforts is really the words I would use. I think we need to make sure that our taxation and regulation levels are such that we can compete in a global marketplace. So when a company wants to decide where they're going to put their next factory or skyrise, Rochester is, or in Olmsted County, are attractive to them or any of the small communities around here. Our taxation is a big deal, and our regulations are a big deal breaker for some businesses. It's a lot more expensive to build generally in Minnesota than it is in the surrounding states. And we need to work on that because we're losing businesses to our surrounding states.
Thank you.
Randy?
And Mark, we'll start with you again. The update to the 2014 Olmsted County Housing Needs Assessment points to an increased need for senior housing options throughout the county. While several efforts have been made to increase affordable workforce housing, what can be done specifically to target increased housing options for older residents on fixed incomes?
I'd like to have us look at allowing secondary houses on residential lots so that if your mother or mother-in-law or father or father-in-law live in a four-bedroom house right now, and there's only one of them, and you have room for a secondary house on your property, a small house on the back lot, that would accomplish a lot of goals. You could have a patio home, have your relatives close by where you could take care of them, and then open up housing for the rest of the market. We have a lot of houses right now that are underused because people can't afford to move out of them. They can't sell their house and move into another place that they'd like to do. So that's an issue that this would help solve.
Thank you. And Wale, the same question. The update to the 2014 Olmsted County Housing Needs Assessment points to an increasing need for more senior housing options throughout the county. Several efforts have been added to provide more affordable housing, workforce housing. But what can be done specifically to target increased housing options for older residents on a fixed income?
Well, it's a tough problem. What the county can do, again, you need to look at your budget, you need to prioritize. But we need to take care of our elderly, we need to take care of our parents, we need to take care of our, our kids, you know, the most vulnerable in our society, people with disabilities and others. It's, bottom line for me is, we need to look at our budget, we need to prioritize. And this is important to me, too. And I'd say, look for ways to reduce the costs. It comes down to cost. If we can reduce the cost, if the county can, if the county is limited in budget, from a budget perspective, can we actually partner with other nonprofit organizations? Can we also partner with businesses, seek out grants, whatever we can do to really help lower those costs? And, and basically make a more favorable environment for developers to, to create those new affordable housing for our elderly. So it's going to be tough, but, but we just need to do it and keep working towards it.
Thank you.
All right. We've been talking about some pretty serious issues. This one may not be quite as serious, but it's still important to a lot of people. And this has to do with Grand Park. The Grand Park Master Plan notes debate exists over the grandstand's merit as an historic structure. Where do you stand on the grandstand as a potential historic structure?
Yeah, to be honest, I don't know much about it. And so I'm not going to grandstand and say, I know much, you know, I don't.
Oh, very good.
Right. But, but I do think it's, you know, our, it's important to keep history, and it's important to make sure that, you know, historic buildings, you know, are being taken care of. So, you know, so I would, I would, you know, involve the community and want to learn more and then before I make a decision.
Sure, of course. Mr. Tyne, same question. Grand Park Master Plan notes that debate exists over the grandstand's merit as an historic structure. Where do you stand on that grandstand as a potential historic structure?
Well, I would, I would have to be convinced that it truly is a historic structure. I think there's a difference between something being old and something being historic. This just doesn't pass a litmus test for me as being a historic structure unless John Greasor, somebody can, can come forward and convince me otherwise, I think it's time to move on and put something better in that space.
All right.
All right.
We're five minutes?
Okay. One more question, or do you want?
One more question, and then we'll get to the closing statements. Thank you.
Okay. Mark, transportation. What can be done to increase accessible and affordable transportation throughout the county?
Yeah, I think as a, as a county level, we got to look at it as a, even bigger than we need to look at at a regional level. You know, obviously, Mayo is a, is a big jobs producer throughout southeast Minnesota. People from as far away as Houston County are moving up here. And we, and we have some level of busing transportation, but we need to make it more regular and more dependable so that people don't have to leave or drive to Rochester, find a place to park to go to work. So I think if you lived in Grand Meadow, or you lived in close by in Iona, and you needed to go to work, that there was a bus every hour that could take you to work, that would, that would be great for our local economy.
Okay. And Wale, the same question. What can be done to increase accessible and affordable transportation throughout the county?
Well, I think it really starts with a strong strategic plan. Again, short-term versus long-term, where do we want to get to? We need to obviously increase with the Destination Medical Center. We do know that Rochester and Olmsted County is going to experience growth. COVID or not, we're going to get through COVID. So we need to start to prepare ourselves for, for that increased expansion. So, and leveraging funding from, from the state. If DMC is important to the state as, as it is, you know, let's look for ways where we can get those increased funds because that benefits the state as well. So, but I think in terms of just roads and stuff, I would be in favor of increasing, working with Mayo Clinic, obviously, an excellent organization and community partners. But I think it's important for us to, because you can, you know, from a product perspective, you can have all these one-off projects, and we want to make sure that whatever we do is adding to the overall vision and accomplishing that. So I want to make sure that we don't lose focus on that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, we are coming to an end of this District Seven Community Forum, and that means we are up against the closing statements here. Again, thank you both for your service and your willingness to serve. As far as the rules are concerned, we now have closing statements, beginning with Wale Leng.
Thank you. So I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to be here. This has been a great conversation. Thanks, Mark, as, you know, great conversation as usual. So Olmsted County and District Seven comprises of Rochester, Orinoco, New Haven, Farmington, Cascade, Haverhill, Marion, and Pine Island. And people are hardworking and dear caring. We also boast of some of the most innovative organizations like Mayo Clinic and others. But the fact is, it's, you know, our community is not working for everyone. We have public health issues, health disparities, COVID economic issues, an affordable housing crisis that took Rochester to the second worst ranking. And we also have lack of trust with law enforcement and community, and minority communities, diversity, equity, and inclusion issues. So this election provides us with a great opportunity in our county. We have the opportunity to afford for someone who is highly qualified, and also brings a diverse and fresh perspectives that'll help us better respond to growth and change. I've led large teams and complex products for some of the largest companies in the world. I've led it for the largest home furniture manufacturer in the world, and also the number one hospital. I get things done, and I ask, I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Tyne, your closing statement.
Thank you, Wale. I think it's important that people have choices on their ballots. There's nothing more discouraging than going to vote and just seeing one option with a write-in next to it. I mean, county commissioner is a very important position, so I appreciate you running because people need a, need a choice. I've been a strong voice of common sense on the Olmsted County Board. I've, in my first four years, I've missed zero board meetings. It's very important to me. I take great pride in my work. If I'm reelected, I will continue to do so. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
All right. Gentlemen, thanks again. Good luck heading into Election Day. If people have already voted, well, the choice is made. If not, hopefully, they learned something this morning. And we're going to take a five-minute break. We're going to be back with the second of our forums, the race in District Five. And again, gentlemen, thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Since the beginning of our civilization, the ability to share our stories, impart wisdom, and uncover the truth has been crucial to the survival of our humankind. The first newspaper in America was Boston's Public Occurrences. It was published in 1690 by Benjamin Harris. He would later be arrested for printing political criticisms. Every copy of his paper was destroyed. It's not an easy job sharing the truth, but it is a vital one. Since early times in our country's history, freedom of the press has always been seen as a threat by the ones who wanted to hide the truth, because they knew that a pen is mightier than the sword. My name is Bill Marsil Jr., and I'm the fifth generation of a family-owned business. My great-great-grandfather started this company in 1917 as a single newspaper in search of the truth. In 2019, the Rochester Post Bulletin joined our news family, and we have been proud to be part of the community. Today, we are making the difficult decision to eliminate days of the printed paper. But we are committed to investing in the best local online news 24 hours a day, because community stories cannot go away. The truth cannot go away. We will not let that happen. We hire the top journalists in our communities and wake up every morning not to sell you a piece of paper, but to bring you uncovered truth, justice, and the voice of our communities. It's not the printed paper that gives people a voice, nor is it the screen. It's the stories, the storytellers, and the readers. We are the people telling those stories. We are the people seeking the truth. We are the people fighting every day to protect the freedom of the press and the legacy of our communities. And we will continue to fight to share the next chapters of our history in a way that the pages of truth will not be torn up.
We are strong, we are resilient, and we will get through this together. But these are stressful times, and it's important to also practice good self-care. It's normal to feel overwhelmed, anxious, or afraid, but there is hope. Reach out to someone, connect with your friends, stay in touch with your community, and know that you are not alone. Learn more at wearebroadcasters.com/hope. Furnished by the National Association of Broadcasters and this station.
Data drives business decisions. The experts at 1236 Marketing analyze the data to get you results. 1236 Marketing digs deep into marketing trends throughout Minnesota and Iowa. With market research and focused analysis, we create data-driven results for your bottom line. Powered by Scarborough, Poc, RISA, and Nielsen Data Fields. Our analysis connects products to clients. 1236 Marketing: Data-Driven Results.
When we look back at this time we're living in, we will see how we came together.
How communities united.
Girl, you're living the life, honey.
Friends became family. Families became one. We saw how important it is to be with people you can rely on.
Those that put a little more sunshine in your day.
So here's the more sunshine in the mornings.
With ABC Six News Good Morning.
And then Good Morning, America.
I moved to Florida with literally pennies in my pocket and a prayer. I needed a new start. Dacian looks like a very typical three-year-old until you ask him, what's your name? How old are you? My son has a lot of behaviors that would show as being autistic. Most kids can tolerate a variety of foods, but unfortunately for Dacian, everything has to be organic and raw. I wasn't ashamed to go to the food pantries. It's expensive to eat healthy, and nutrition is very important to Dacian's health. The healthy, organic food that we receive dramatically helped his social skills. Most people would say, she really doesn't have much of a life. But to me, I have everything right there next to me and my son.
The Olmsted County Commissioners Debate continues.
Back to our series of community forums this morning, and this is number two of three this morning in the race for Olmsted County Board of Commissioners. Again, I'm Ross Becker from ABC Six News, and I'm joined by the Government Affairs Reporter for the Rochester Post Bulletin, Randy Peterson. Randy, thanks for being with us again today. Let's welcome the candidates now for District Five in Olmsted County. The incumbent, Jim Beer, and the challenger, Regina Mustafa. Thank you both for, for running, your service, and your willingness to serve. The timekeeper, go ahead and start the clock. And we begin with our opening statements. And Mr. Beer, you won the toss. Present your one-minute opening statement first.
Thank you, Ross. My name's Jim Beer, and I'm your county commissioner. Olmsted County is a diverse, fast-growing community. With the current COVID pandemic and many social issues facing us, it's a time for proven, steady leadership. I provide such leadership. Throughout my tenure, I have fostered a cooperative atmosphere, whether it's with our largest city, Rochester, small cities, townships, or school districts. Though at times we disagree, we work hard to overcome the solutions that will work for everyone in the county, whether it's the city, rural, or suburban. Our county is diverse, with Rochester providing a large employment base, while outlying areas provide various living options, as well as a network of excellent recreational opportunities. This is who I am. I'm proud of the work that I've accomplished for Olmsted County, and I look forward to your questions and debate.
Thank you, Mr. Beer. Now for an opening statement, Regina Mustafa.
Thank you. I'm Regina Mustafa. My husband and I have been living in Olmsted County for over 13 years with our two children who attend Rochester Public Schools. I have a master's degree in human services from Winona State University. I completed an internship with our local detox facility. I really understand the importance of behavioral health services to our county through that experience, and I'm now a licensed alcohol and drug addiction counselor. Since 2014, I have worked tirelessly with my nonprofit organization to unite diverse communities, also providing financial and peer support to local single mothers regardless of background. And my community, my civic engagement has also included appointments to several local boards and commissions, including the Olmsted County Human Rights Commission, City of Rochester Ethical Practices Board. And I currently serve as an appointed member of the Rochester-Olmsted Council of Governments. My, really, the focus of my campaign is on the importance of transportation, safe roadways, further integrating our county services so that they work for all our communities. And thank you. I'll leave it at that.
All right. We have, we have a lot of questions for both of you, and hopefully, through those questions, the voters will know a little bit more about you. Let's start, Randy. First question.
Thank you, candidates, for being here. We'll start with Regina on the first question. The roles of various levels of government are often confused. What can a county commissioner do to improve the county resident's understanding of the role and the value of county government?
I plan to have bi-weekly meetings throughout District Five in person and online. I'm highly engaged in social media, various social media platforms. I plan to use all of these platforms and means of communication to have regular communication and conversations with people in District Five and throughout Olmsted County.
Thank you. And Jim, the roles of various levels of government are often confused. What can the county commissioner, what can a county commissioner do to improve a county resident's understanding of the role and value of county government?
Thanks, Randy. Well, besides the, you know, coffees that I have out at Otto's in Byron, and sometimes in Rochester at Dunn Brothers, the thing, forums like this is a great thing we can do. This gives us an avenue so people understand. Counties are an arm of the state and the federal government in Minnesota. That's the way counties operate. So our primary purpose is to administer human services in the state of Minnesota. We do that with grants from the federal and the state government, and we get these grants, and then we're in charge. Counties in the state of Minnesota are in charge of administering these human services. Beyond that, we're in charge of the waste of energy, the local jail. We work with our elected sheriff and county attorney to solve crime in the outlying counties. But when you talk about cities, Byron, Rochester, St. Charles, any of these cities, cities are more about planning and zoning, how are they going to grow sewer districts, economic growth. We're involved with these things, but that's more of a city, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. My, my question has to do with relationships. And you mentioned that all the cities, particularly the city of Rochester, which is kind of like the big elephant in the room when it comes to Olmsted County. Would you commit to, and this is for Mr. Beer, we'll start there. Would you commit to regular, perhaps weekly or monthly meetings with the Rochester City Council to address or overcome what are sometimes conflicting goals between the county and the city?
Thanks, Ross. That's another good question. You know, back two terms ago, or the, two times ago when I was the county chair, I instituted a meeting, a monthly meeting where we had the county board chair, the vice chair, the county administrator would meet with the mayor, the city council president, and the administrator from the city. And we'd meet, you know, on a Monday morning, and it was no secret, meaning if public wanted to come, I mean, we put it out on the website, people could come. They rarely did. But we would talk about these things. I'm a big believer, if you just sit down, have a cup of coffee, have a donut, probably should have something more, you know, eating too many donuts. But, you know, you can get, you can get through a lot of this stuff. I think it's overblown that we don't get along with our comrades at the, at the city and the school district. You know, they've got their things to do, we've got our things to do. Sometimes there's a conflict, but in the bulk of the things, we work real well together. And I think, I, yes, I definitely would be okay with meeting more often with them. It's, okay, I got to stop. I can get fired up about that, you can tell.
Thank you. Regina Mustafa, same question. Would you commit to regular, perhaps weekly or monthly meetings with the Rochester City Council to address or overcome what are sometimes conflicting goals?
Yes. And I do believe having new leadership at, at the table will also help with that. But yes, I'm absolutely committed to meeting with members of the city council, Byron City Council, school board, any of our local government entities, because, you know, we're all, we're all working, we're all serving the same community members. So we, we really should get together regularly, get us all caffeinated, and, yeah, the donuts always help.
Yeah.
And so.
Caffeine, good.
Right. So I think that's getting us all together and seeing how each entity, each government body can really help the other one is. body can really help the other one is absolutely essential.
I'm going to follow up on a couple of things that were said here. So the city currently has a mayor and a city president, which are four-year terms, and it's a go-to person on that body. The county government rotates, as was mentioned, its chairmanship. Does the county need to look at a different way to establish somebody who's a longer permanent voice?
I'm willing to explore that, the benefits of it, and to, you know, kind of weigh the pros and cons of keeping it the way it is now with a rotating leadership, which I could see it does have a lot of benefits. But having that go-to person that's kind of elected by everyone in the community does have its benefits as well. I would really have to explore that, but most importantly, really get feedback from the community and see how they feel about it before making a decision.
Thank you. And Jim, same question. Is there a benefit to the way it's done now with a rotating chair? Or would you be willing to look at some sort of option that had an elected official to serve in that role, similar to the city council?
Thanks, Randy. You know, it's actually, the board chair at the county is an elected official. We elect it among our peers. We have a vote on the first meeting and elect the chair. It's been the tradition in Olmsted County that it's rotating, and there's kind of a set order. We've never mucked around with that. In other counties, and if you look at Anoka County, or if you look at Hennepin, I'm not sure about Ramsey, but they're probably about the same way, it's a big deal. The board chair, a lot of times, is the board chair for many years. I don't like that. I'm willing to look at anything. I'm willing to discuss it. I like the way we do it right now, rotating, because then, you know, we've got seven different people, and they've got seven different ideas and seven different priorities, you know, things that they want to focus on. And I think it's good. You get your turn, you get to kind of set the agenda, and you do your thing, I mean, with the other commissioners, you know, pulling them along. But it gives us a value there that I think is very good.
Thank you.
All right. Next question. This one has to do with something that, because of what's happened in the Twin Cities this year and around the country, is very important, and that is law enforcement. And obviously, the Olmsted County Sheriff's Department is a big part of life here. The county sheriff is an elected official, Mr. Beer, who oversees the department. Is there a role for county commissioners to play in encouraging changes in the way that sheriff's department operates? And if so, what changes would you like to see made in the Olmsted County Sheriff's Department?
Thanks, Ross. You know, I think our sheriff right now, our current sheriff, he is an elected official, and I think he's doing a great job. Are there things I'd do different if I was the sheriff? Probably. But I think he's doing the best with what he has given. If we saw our sheriff going off what we would consider going off the rails or doing something that we didn't agree with as a county commissioner, our way to deal with that is through finances. He doesn't set the budget. We set the taxes. We give him money to run his department. So that's where we can apply pressure. Now, realistically, we work with him. We work with him and the elected county attorney. You know, he's doing a heck of a good job. There's been some things saying we need more diversity in the patrol officers. Right now, he's hiring off the roster as fast as he can. I mean, there's not enough people applying. Can we do something different there? Maybe. Maybe we could have an academy where we could, you know, if people agreed that if, once they got out of the academy, they'd stay on as a deputy for five years. I don't know. Can we do something different? Sure we can, but I think he's doing a good job.
All right. Mr. Beer, thank you. Regina Mustafa, same question. The county sheriff is an elected official who oversees the department. Is there a role for county commissioners to play in encouraging changes in the way that department operates? And if so, what changes would you like to see made?
Right, so the county does have a voice and a say in terms of the budget. I would like to see the elimination of the chokehold language in the sheriff's department. Working as a behavioral health professional, I have worked alongside members of RPD and the sheriff's department, even deputies from other counties. I really have the firsthand experience to know how vital it is that we increase resources or shift resources so we can expand the behavioral health professionals or the social workers who are working with both RPD and the sheriff's department, so not only Rochester benefits from that program, but the entire county. So I believe currently, the study came out that in the United States, we spend over, like $918 million on the police, law enforcement responding to mental health crisis. So it's going to save money, actually, that we shift those funding more towards, you know, having social workers and behavioral health professionals doing those calls.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy? And Regina. County commissioners have made it clear that they would like to see a new interchange at the intersection of US Highway 14 and 60th Avenue between Rochester and Byron, which sits in Ward 5, District 5. But the state, funding for that has remained uncertain. A proposed modification, known as a J-turn, has been suggested as a way to limit collisions at the site. Is a J-turn acceptable as an option until future funds are available?
Absolutely. I do believe that the J-turn is an acceptable option. Just like you said, we don't have the money from the state with the bonding funds for this $40 million project, which would be great, but if we don't have the money, we don't have the money. And if you look at implementing a J-turn or keeping it the way it is now, J-turn will definitely reduce a lot of those high-impact collisions that have been causing all these deaths over the years. So absolutely.
Thank you. And Jim, county commissioners have made it clear that they would like to see a new interchange at US 14 and 60th Avenue between Rochester and Byron, but state funding for the project remains uncertain. A proposed modification, known as a J-turn, has been suggested to limit collisions at the site. Is a J-turn acceptable as an option until future funding is available?
I'm sorry I only have a minute on this. I tell you what, that is, we've just had another death there. We're approaching 300 deaths in the state of Minnesota. We need to make these intersections safer. You know, the engineers at MinDOT think it's okay. I'm not a traffic engineer. Our traffic engineers, who are hired civil engineers who study this, think J-turns are okay in the appropriate area. This, in their opinion, and Olmsted County engineers, is not an appropriate area. They feel it will drive traffic more to the east of West Circle Drive, which is already a problem, has at peak times, people are backing out onto Highway 14 on the exit ramps, which is very dangerous. And it'll also push people, because they don't want to mess with a J-turn, out to west to County Road 3, and you're just going to push that issue to the west. So no, I don't like the J-turn. We've got, what really frosted me was in MinDOT's 10-year plan, 10-year plan, this was not even in their 10-year plan. That's what got me going a couple Tuesdays ago at the county board meeting. We have a funding solution. We just got to get it in their 10-year plan and have them do it.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Beer, we're going to change a little bit here. We're going to talk about another issue that is very passionate for a lot of people, and that is substance abuse, because that's one of the things the county can deal with. The 2019 Olmsted County Community Health Assessments Need identified substance abuse as one of the top three community health priorities. How do you propose the county address this issue?
Thanks, Ross. Again, this is something that counties do in Minnesota. This is one of the things that we do. And we've done some good things. We've, with Center City Housing, they're out of Duluth, we constructed the wet house for chronic alcoholics, and we have that out at the Waste of Energy. Can we do more with COVID? Absolutely. People are turning to substance abuse, and we got to do more. It's a balancing act between how much fun we can have. I'm an advocate that we partner. We don't have enough money. We can't raise enough money in Olmsted County to solve this problem. So we need to take our resources and have strategic partnerships with nonprofits like Catholic Charities and the Lutherans, and then the other ones like Center City Housing, to construct, and they know how to help these people just as good as we do, and they can help us. And we can also partner with our private sector to construct some of these facilities. So yeah, can we do more? We need to do more, but we need to work with our partners in the community.
All right. Thank you. Regina Mustafa, same question. The Community Health Needs Assessment identified substance abuse as one of the top three community health priorities. So how would you propose the county address this issue?
Well, as a licensed alcohol and drug addiction counselor, works in the realm of substance use, I believe that with my presence in this election, the county has a great opportunity to have somebody with these experiences right on hand. If we're going to address substance use, we also need to address the inclusion and diversity of county staff. We have to make sure that we're hiring professionals that reflect the communities that we serve, especially in the realm of substance abuse, where we have minority communities not accessing the treatment in terms of the greater majority populations. We also need to address affordable housing issues at the same time, because if somebody doesn't have a stable, safe place to live, it's very difficult to deal with your substance use issues. We need to continue to work, if we could get federal fundraising with CARES Act that could cover substance use treatment, to expand that funding, that would be fantastic, and also working with our state partners to make sure that we have as many barriers out of the way for people to access the treatment they need.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll start with Regina on this. Would you support funding, the funding and creation, the creation and operation of a permanent shelter for people facing homelessness?
Yes, absolutely. I would. It's essential. It seems like a lot of the work that we've been doing, even with our partners with the city, with the warming shelters, is as much, as great as these services are, and the Catholic Charities has been phenomenal heading these programs, it seems to be like a lot of patchwork and a lot of leases that the county is doing, and the city is putting money here and there. We need to find a permanent solution. We need to look at other communities who have permanent housing options for people experiencing homelessness and see how we can do that here in terms of funding. We need to make sure the services are integrated into this shelter as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Jim, would you support the funding, support funding the creation and operation of a permanent shelter for people facing homelessness?
You know, I think we're already there with the facility we have across from the government center. That's basically a permanent solution right now. However, the one thing we need, the experts that we've had studies on this, it needs to be short-term. We don't want to have this as a permanent, we don't want people there long-term. You want to get people in, help them with what they need, whether it's chemical dependency, alcohol abuse, getting a job, you know, everybody's got a different story, and get them and find sustainable housing. I'd like to give a shout-out to our human service person, Paul Fleischner, and our HRA director, David Dunn. Last winter, when we had Catholic Charities was running the homeless shelter down across from the government center, I forget the number, and so don't quote me on this, but I think they were successful in getting about 76% or 78% of those people, and these were tough people, a housing option that they could afford and they could live in, whether it was at the Francis. So do we want to have a homeless shelter? We're going to, we have a homeless shelter, but we don't want people to use that as their primary place to stay.
Thank you.
All right. Jim, a question for you. We've been talking about all the things the county needs. Simple question. Are Olmsted County taxes too high, about right, or pleasantly low?
There are no simple questions. Well, you waited kind of towards the end to get on that.
Well, we had to get everything else on the table.
All right. Well, you know, I think we're about right right now. We set our preliminary levy back in September at zero, so that's the maximum we can have in 2021. We could go down, we could have a negative. At this point, I think we're about right. You know, we've got a large human service program in Olmsted County. Like it or not, a lot of our neighboring counties that are rural, a lot of those people end up migrating here, and we've got to take care of them. I mean, we are the big elephant in the room in southeastern Minnesota, so we have a responsibility to help these people out. I don't want to increase its taxes in the near term, but my metric for increasing taxes is I look at what the inflation rate is and how much growth we have. So say we had inflation at 2.5%, and, you know, we had growth of 1%, then I'd be at 3.5%. That's kind of where I start, and then I'll work up or down from that. That's the way I operate.
All right. Regina Mustafa, same question. Are county taxes too high, about right, or pleasantly low?
I would say I agree with Mr. Beer that the county taxes are right. It's right now, it's set at 0%, and of course, that has to be approved come December, but of course, in the midst of COVID-19, you know, it's very tricky to, are you going to increase the tax levy, you know, come 2021, when I'm sure so many of us are still going to need these services from the county, even more so, unfortunately? But at the same time, people are struggling financially in their homes. So that has to be, you know, it's a balancing act each year to see the benefits that can come to the community with raising any taxes and how that could actually save the community actually in the long run. But right now, I think they're okay.
All right.
Thank you. And Regina, we'll start with you again. What is the county's role in economic development, and how could the county fund increased efforts to attract and develop businesses locally?
I think, and what the county, one of the major roles of the county is helping people with those basic needs, affordable housing. If we want to contribute to this region's economic development, we have to have affordable places for people to actually come and live and stay here. And that also comes with creating an inclusive and diverse atmosphere at the county of our workforce, so we can retain talent from not just from Olmsted County or the state, even outside of the state. The more welcoming and inclusive and, you know, welcoming to people's ideas and walks of life, the more likely they are going to want to stay here and set roots here and contribute and give back to the community. So with housing and contributing to just an inclusive and diverse environment is how I would go about that initially.
Thank you. And Jim, same question. What is the county's role in economic development, and how could the county fund increased efforts to attract and develop businesses locally?
You know, they say variety is the spice of life, Randy, and I agree with Regina. We've got, the county, cities try and have economic development by having a TIF district and trying to get buildings built and that type of thing. The county, we're about quality of life, so housing options for people. We want to get people who, and, you know, with my role being on the DMC, we got to attract this young talent, diverse young talent to come and want to live in cold, you know, 20 below Rochester, Minnesota, versus, you know, out in California or New York, you know, on the coast. And that's what DMC is about. So we got to provide housing options for different people, recreational opportunities, you know, affordable housing. We got to take care of the people that need a little hand up. These are the things we can do to increase our economic vitality and make Rochester and Olmsted County a great place to live.
All right. One of those issues is transportation. People need to get the jobs, they need to get the healthcare, they need to get from the county into the city sometimes. So let me, Jim, I'll start with you. What can be done to increase accessible and affordable transportation throughout the county, not just the city?
You know, I'm a big believer, the days of everybody driving a car downtown are done, and I think with COVID, that's accelerated that. People are working remotely. So we've got to give people options. You know, if they want to drive a car, we've got to make sure that we can. But we can't park all those cars downtown, so we got to have a park-and-ride or some way for them to park on the outskirts of Rochester and get downtown. We got to provide busing. We got to provide walkability. We got to provide bike routes for those people that choose to bike to work. We got to do the whole thing. And I think if you look at what the county's done in the past, we try to do that. If you look out on East or West Circle Drive, over by Essex Park, the new bridge we put in, geez, that was a $40 million bridge, all paid for by Olmsted County taxpayers, but that's got two wide lanes, it's got two bike lanes, it's got two paved paths off on the side for walkability. These are things we can do. We work with, we don't work with the Rochester bus system, but we do have county-wide zips and that type of thing, so I got to stop.
All right. Regina Mustafa, same question. What can be done to increase accessible and affordable transportation throughout the entire county?
I agree with much of what Mr. Beer said, and as a person, I have juvenile macular degeneration, so I'm a person that relies on the good charity of my friends to give me a ride and on public transportation. So I really understand how important it is to have, yes, the county to maintain and to continue to connect bicycle pathways, as it can further encourage people to use alternate modes of transportation to get into Rochester and to get downtown. Working with our city partners, of course, is crucial, as RPT and the city side continue to develop and expand public transportation. And as a sitting member of ROCOG, we have voted on the Bus Rapid Transit System, which I'm fully in support of. However, we can just continue and to have alternate modes of transportation, bringing our, the surrounding towns and cities, and making it easier for them to come into downtown is, that's one of my top priorities as well.
All right. Thank you. It's been suggested that there's an increased interest in building residential housing on large lots outside the cities that make up Olmsted County. What should the county's goal be in regulating such development?
Yeah, it's good.
I'm sorry, Regina. I'm sorry, Regina.
Yeah. So when I was out in the Kalmer Township meeting, there was, I did meet a gentleman who was very concerned. He owns a farm out there, North Byron, and he's, he's seeing all this farming land surrounding him being developed into housing. And so I am not a big supporter of the notion of sprawl. I would really be hesitant, you know, to have more and more county land be developed for residential housing. I don't think that's going to help with things like transportation and connectability and creating affordable options because it's hard to have an affordable housing option if it's not properly connected to existing public transportation. So I'm very hesitant about that. And I, it's, it's, it's essential that we continue to, you know, to contribute to DMC and a thriving Rochester, but also finding a way to balance that and to maintain our rural way of life in the smaller towns and districts outside of Rochester.
Thank you. And Jim, it's been suggested that there's an increasing interest to build residential housing on large lots outside Olmsted County's cities. What should the county's goal be in regulating such development?
Thanks, Randy. You know, being on the DMC board, if we want to attract talent to come to work here, we have to provide options for people. I'm not for sprawl, but at the same time, not everybody wants to live in an urban city setting. Some people do, that's great. Some people want to live in a small town like Pine Island, Byron, something like that. Some people want to live on two acres out there. If you say, if we try and control that, we're going to eliminate some of these people that, you know, want to come here. So we need to be smart about it, and I think we have been smart about it. We have a clues model that identifies the next best 3,000 acres to develop for small lot development, you know, two to five acre lots. We try and keep these things together so that we're not having them willy-nilly all over, because that is bad. I mean, that's just terrible. And I think, and as that land gets used up, we usually put some more land into that. So we try to identify the least, the best land for building, which is hopefully the worst land for farming. And I think we're, you know, doing that, so.
There's so many issues. We'll never get to all of them in a half hour. We've reached that point now where we've come to closing statements. It goes by quickly, very, very quickly. So let me thank you again for your service and for your willingness to serve, and good luck on Election Day. Because of the draw at the beginning of this forum, we will now begin our clothing, closing statements, and we begin with Regina Mustafa. Regina?
Thank you. I really feel that the work that I've been doing in this community can really just grow and expand if elected to this county commissioner seat. I, I believe in community service. It has been embedded in my family tradition for generations, and I really want to do that at the county level. And I believe that my experiences, both personal and professional, make me rightly qualified to ensure a transparent government, a fair government at the county level. And this is our last debate, and I do want to thank Mr. Beer again for his years of service, and it's been a lot of fun. And I wish you all the best come Election Day. Thank you.
All right. Forum in District Five. Now, closing statement from Jim Beer.
All right. I'd like to thank KAL and Rochester Post Bulletin for sponsoring this debate. It's been a pleasure to serve my views of the county. And I'd also like to thank my constituents out there to allow me, that have allowed me to serve for them for the past 18 years as your commissioner. I really do enjoy it and thank, thank you to them. Why am I the right candidate? I'm a proven leader. When we faced the housing crisis in 2008, I worked hard to find solutions that would ease the burden for people. I've tried hard to make the county a better place. Whether it's 76% of my people that live in the city of Rochester, the city of Byron, or the rural folks I represent, I'm proud of my record. Though you may not agree with me on every issue, I hope you agree that I'm working to make Olmsted County a great place to work and live. I'm Jim Beer, and I'm the right person at the right time, in the right place to continue to serve as your commissioner. More information can be found on my website at realeaguejimbeer.com. Please remember to exercise your right and duty to vote on November 3rd. And thank you, Regina.
Candidates, thank you both again. Good luck heading into Election Day. We're going to take a five-minute break, and we will return with our third forum of the morning, and that is the Candidates for District One. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
Before the sun comes up over southern Minnesota and northern Iowa. ABC Six News is already working to bring you the latest updates in your area.
To keep you informed wherever you are.
And to keep you prepared everywhere you go.
Make it a great day by waking up with ABC Six News Good Morning.
Since the beginning of our civilization, the ability to share our stories, impart wisdom, and uncover the truth has been crucial to the survival of our humankind. The first newspaper in America was Boston's Public Occurrences. It was published in 1690 by Benjamin Harris. He would later be arrested for printing political criticisms. Every copy of his paper was destroyed. It's not an easy job sharing the truth, but it is a vital one. Since early times in our country's history, freedom of the press has always been seen as a threat by the ones who wanted to hide the truth because they knew that a pen is mightier than the sword. My name is Bill Marceal Jr., and I'm the fifth generation of a family-owned business. My great-great-grandfather started this company in 1917 as a single newspaper in search of the truth. In 2019, the Rochester Post Bulletin joined our news family, and we have been proud to be part of the community. Today, we are making the difficult decision to eliminate days of the printed paper. But we are committed to investing in the best local online news 24 hours a day because community stories cannot go away. The truth cannot go away. We will not let that happen. We hire the top journalists in our communities and wake up every morning not to sell you a piece of paper, but to bring you uncovered truth, justice, and the voice of our communities. It's not the printed paper that gives people a voice, nor is it the screen. It's the stories, the storytellers, and the readers. We are the people telling those stories. We are the people seeking the truth. We are the people fighting every day to protect the freedom of the press and the legacy of our communities. And we will continue to fight to share the next chapters of our history in a way that the pages of truth will not be torn up.
The Albert Lee Fire Department opened their new home in style Tuesday.
You can have the greatest building, you can have the greatest apparatus, the greatest resources in the world, but without your people, your people are your number one resource. Everybody was very, very grateful to the city to, that they were willing to look out for the firefighters, to give us the space to be able to do the things we needed to, to help protect those firefighters.
Safety is the number one thing for your public, and it doesn't just stop at your public, it goes right up to your staff.
ABC Six News, everywhere. Data drives business decisions. The experts at 1236 Marketing analyze the data to get you results. 1236 Marketing digs deep into marketing trends throughout Minnesota and Iowa. With market research and focused analysis, we create data-driven results for your bottom line. Powered by Scarborough, Poc, RISA, and Nielsen Data Fields. Our analysis connects products to clients. 1236 Marketing, data-driven results.
We are strong, we are resilient, and we will get through this together. But these are stressful times, and it's important to also practice good self-care. It's normal to feel overwhelmed, anxious, or afraid, but there is hope. Reach out to someone, connect with your friends, stay in touch with your community, and know that you are not alone. Learn more at wearebroadcasters.com/hope. Furnished by the National Association of Broadcasters and this station.
In-depth coverage.
Are you happy with our police department?
On local issues.
What is the ultimate takeaway? What is something that really struck a chord in you?
Providing context.
People want change. We need change.
An expert insight.
The numbers in Cerro Gordo County.
Where you need to know the whole story. Watch ABC Six News tonight with Betsy Singer, weeknights at 6:30, only on ABC Six News.
Olmsted County Commissioners Debate continues.
Good morning again. Welcome back to our community forums this morning presented by ABC Six News and the Rochester Post Bulletin for the Olmsted County Board of Commissioners. This is our third forum this morning, and this is for District One in Olmsted County. Again, I'm Ross Becker, ABC Six News, and I'm joined by the Government Affairs Reporter for the Rochester Post Bulletin, Randy Peterson. Randy, thank you for being here. Let's welcome our candidates now for District One, the incumbent Stephanie Pedulke and the challenger, Bucky Beaman. The timekeeper can start the clock over here. We're going to start with our opening statements, and because of a coin toss, we're going to begin with Bucky Beaman. You have your one-minute opening statement. Go ahead.
Thank you. On the ballot, I'm Robert Beaman. My real name is Robert, but I go by Bucky. Born and raised here in Rochester, Minnesota, I attended K through 12, all the way through the public school system. My father is a small business owner, my mother is a schoolteacher here in the community. And Olmsted County has been great to me, great to my family, great for my business aspirations that I started shortly after high school. And I've been fortunate to help a lot of businesses, a lot of individuals get started, achieve their dreams, chase their goals. And through these years of experience, I've dealt with the government through the city and county, and I want to continually give back to this great county for what it's given to me. So I look forward to the opportunity to serve as your District One County Commissioner, and we'll get into the different issues and aspects of my role here as the County Commissioner. And thank you so much for the opportunity this morning.
Thank you. And now, one-minute opening statement from Stephanie Pedulke.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Stephanie Pedulke. I've been your county commissioner now for 10 years. I've lived and worked in Rochester for over 40 years, and almost every job in my long working career has prepared me to make decisions at the county level. I've seen enough courage and pain and despair and hopes and dreams and resilience to know what's important in this community and what we need for our diversity. I believe in the possibilities of human potential and social change, and I trust that my decisions in the past 10 years have made this a better place to live and prosper. I'm also a small business owner here since 1976, and I raised my family here. I know this district, this county. I've worked with other elected officials and city leaders in the city. That's what I have to offer the voters, along with experience, knowledge, and what I think is a very steady approach to problems. Thanks.
All right. Let's start our questions this morning from Randy Peterson of the Post Bulletin. Randy?
Thank you, candidates, for being here. And we'll start with Stephanie on this one. Acknowledging that District One sits inside Rochester's city limits entirely, the roles of the city and the county government are frequently confused. What can commissioners do to raise the profile of the work done by county government?
Yes. We do have different missions, the city and the county. As a, as a, as a county, we need to assure that the safety and, and, and public health of the community, we have to assure that we have, we continue the foundation, maintain the foundations of democracy, which has to do with redistricting and electing things. And we have to oversee the environment. And those are our three big missions, whereas the city's mission is developing and working within the parameters of that city district. So the question was, what can we do inside the city? Well, I pay attention to things that happen in my district when the city's going to make decisions that affect my district, such as running the Bus Rapid Transit route up Third Avenue. I fought that.
And Bucky, the roles of the city and county government are frequently confused. What can the commissioners do to raise the profile of the work done by the county government?
Well, I believe that the question comes up often, what does the county exactly do? And I think as a county commissioner, we need to be out in the community, boots on the ground, letting people know how their voice can affect decisions that the county is making, and how we can, as a county, help encourage strong growth, proper services being delivered, and how we can, as leaders, really show that we're working for the people. So I look forward to having conversations with people on a regular basis. I look forward to being continually active on social media. I look forward to doing what I've done for many years in my business role and just bringing it to a county level of showing people how they can be involved and how they can also reach out to the leaders such as myself.
All right. My turn to ask a question, Mr. Beaman. And let's get down the road of looking at what problems are, need to be prioritized. The, the county has adopted the One Olmsted Resolution to address health, social, and racial equity goals. What is the most critical equity issue that needs to be tackled, in your opinion?
There's so many equity issues, it's difficult to just tackle one. I think that if I look at our community as a whole, the one that I would really like to tackle myself personally is affordable housing and the housing crisis that we're living through. And I think that it's a difficult time to do it because budgets are going to be cut, and we're going to have to find proper ways to really encourage smart growth and encourage the growth of affordable housing, workforce housing, both rental and ownership. So this is an area that I want to make housing available to people of all backgrounds, people of all ages. And I think through my experiences and through my willingness to work and listen, that I can do so and help provide that here in our, in our county.
All right. Thank you. Stephanie Pedulke, same question. The county has adopted the One Olmsted Resolution to address health, social, and racial equity goals. In your opinion, in your opinion, I'm sorry, what is the most critical equity issue that needs to be tackled?
Okay. So the most important equity issue that needs to be tackled is that everyone who lives in Olmsted County needs to feel valued and included in things. And I think it's important to understand the difference between equity and equality. Equity is giving people the tools that they need to be successful. Equality is treating people the same. Equality doesn't work unless people are starting at the same place. So equity is giving to people what they need so we all start at the same place. We all want equity, that's a wonder, excuse me, equality, that's a wonderful goal, but equity is the way we get there. And I think finding employees who meet the diversity backgrounds that our community represents in the county and working in schools, our website, I don't know if we need scholarships, we just need to bring more diversity to our workforce.
Randy?
Thank you. The next question would go to Stephanie first. Would you support funding and the funding and creation, I'm sorry, would you support funding the creation and operation of a permanent shelter for people facing homelessness?
Yes, because all of us, except for, you know, the grace of God, could be homeless. It, it happens, it can happen to everyone. And there's, there's a dilemma between if you make it nice enough, people are going to come from all over and fill up, fill it up because there's an unending need for, for homeless shelters. I think we need to do that year-round. But as part of that, it isn't just enough to give shelter. What we need to do is get in the shelters and find people who are willing to give up that life or can give it up and want to live someplace permanent. And our HRA and, and our living social workers have done that. They have found so many places, looking in the community for buildings that we can make useful for homeless people to live in a permanent place.
Thank you. And Bucky, would you support funding the creation and operation of a permanent shelter for people facing homelessness?
Yes, I absolutely would. The county is doing a great job with the facility that they have on Fourth Street. And I think they've done a great job through the pandemic of providing services through the Civic Center with partnership with the city. So I would do so. I think what we need to explore is partnerships. We need to explore how nonprofits can get involved with this and make this to where it's something that's being offered to those that are wanting true help and that we can help. to those that are wanting true help and that we can help them through this process of getting out of homelessness. As we've heard in other conversations with the county commissioners, we don't want it to be a long-term, permanent residence. So I look forward to adding to the conversation and problem-solving and working with the neighborhoods to make sure that it's properly being planned, properly being funded, and being built here in Olmsted County.
All right. Next question. We've already talked a little bit about the differences between the county and the municipal governments in the county, but let's talk about what's the same about them. And that's what this question kind of gets to. Would you commit, Mr. Beeman, to regular, perhaps weekly or monthly meetings with the Rochester City Council to address or help overcome what are sometimes conflicting goals?
Yes, I would commit to regular meetings. I think that that's something extremely important, is continuing the conversations, exploring communication potential to help build on the great relationship that we have. I think at times it's a little unfortunate that the media picks up on the bad news with the headline. And so we need to help show our county that we are having healthy conversations that is leading to proper change, good change for their interests. And I think through those regular meetings that it will definitely help show the community that we're working together for the common good.
Stephanie Pedolkey, the same question. Would you commit to regular, perhaps weekly or monthly, meetings with the Rochester City Council to address or overcome what are sometimes conflicting goals?
Absolutely. Last time I was the chair of the county board, I instituted those kinds of meetings. Every month, we had a meeting. And what that did was to give each other a heads-up. Here's something that's coming down the line. Here's some kind of project we have coming. What can we do to prepare for that for everyone? You know, you hear people say, wow, I never heard about that before. Well, there's always the first time you hear about something. So it's really good to hear about something in a meeting where you're there to be collegial, to share the problems that may come up with a project. And I will be chair next year, and it's the first thing I'm going to do is start those meetings again. It's been very difficult in the last six months to have meetings like that because of COVID and, you know, people having campaigns and things. But we are in this together, and we have to work together and set an example.
All right. Thank you.
An update, we'll start with Stephanie again here. An update to the 2014 Olmsted County Housing Needs Assessment points to an increasing need for more senior housing options throughout the county. While several efforts have been made to add additional affordable workforce housing units, what can be done specifically to target the increased need for housing options for older residents on fixed incomes?
Yes. Well, when we first got our HRA money, I was very clear with the HRA that we needed to set aside about a third of that for renovation. I think people deserve to live in their homes as long as they can. That's dignified. That's comfortable. Whatever we can do to fix up a house for older people to be safe and live with dignity in their houses, we need to do that. And we certainly are building a lot of senior citizen residences, and people who want to do that and can afford that, that's good. But I don't think we should forget about the people who want to age at home. And that's what our, for me, that's the neediest people, and that's where our HRA money should go.
Thank you. And Bucky, looking at the needs assessment and increase for, need for more affordable senior housing options throughout the county, what can be done specifically to target increasing housing options for older residents on fixed incomes?
Thanks, Randy. So I believe that one of the large hurdles we often see with affordable housing is that developers that want to build, whether it be a single-level townhome or actually a complex like Fontaine Towers, the land cost is extremely high. And so we need to look at the assets that the county owns, such as the Seneca site, such as property out near the college. And we need to say, how can we encourage this type of development to occur on assets that we already own and have control of, whether that's through private developers, nonprofit developers, or even us getting involved to a certain capacity at the county level? I like the idea that a previous commissioner had presented as far as looking at our zoning and the ability to build smaller housing attached with other housing so that the children could essentially take care of their parents on the same lot. And Commissioner Pedolkey did a nice job of encouraging, helping people stay in their homes. I think that's important. So it's a complex issue, and I look forward to adding to the conversation at the county board seat of District One.
Thank you.
All right. Let's talk about transportation. Now, there are a lot of things already in place and a lot of discussion about things that might be coming down the pike in the future. But what can be done, Mr. Beeman, to increase accessible and affordable transportation throughout the county?
Yeah, that issue, we have to look at it through a strategic lens, and I would say it's short-term and long-term. On the short-term side, I think we need to help encourage that people do carpooling, that people understand what our public system offers. I just met a young woman just a week ago, and she's been riding the bus for many years. And she said, it just took a little while to get used to it. But once I got used to it, I definitely could understand how I can do this long-term. And now she's been doing so. So I think often it's getting somebody over the hurdle of just trying it. And so if we can encourage that through our county level, it will help people adapt to it. The long-term vision, it's working with the cities that are experiencing people commuting to Rochester, to Mayo, and seeing how we can work with them to develop parking rides, to develop incentives for people not to all drive separate from these communities. And so I look forward to being a part of those conversations and really bringing a forward-thinking thought to the county board seat. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Stephanie Pedolkey, same question about transportation. What can be done to increase accessible and affordable transportation throughout the entire Olmsted County?
Right. There's two issues there. One is, how do we get people, there's thousands of people who drive into Rochester every day to work here. And it's not just at the Mayo Clinic. They work all over the place. Thousands of people come in. Where do they park? So we need to provide a place for them to park. But once they do that, then how do we get them into their jobs in the specific sites? I can't wait until we can take over that railroad spur from Grand Park into downtown. I just think that is a perfect vehicle to move people. I hope we can set up a parking, a remote parking place at Seneca yet, and move people into town on that railroad. And we can certainly encourage the city, or whoever, we have to lobby for that, to have bus routes that come in from Byron and Chatfield and Stuartville to bring people into the city as well. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we'll start with Stephanie Pedolkey on this one. The county is working with partners to create a regional mental health crisis center, and it supports crisis teams as well as outreach workers partnered with law enforcement. What additional steps should the county take to address mental health concerns?
Well, one of the big things that we're doing right now is embedding social workers and mental health workers with law enforcement. Law enforcement has to keep the peace. It has to make sites safe. It has to deal with emergencies. But there are people on edge in every one of those situations, and the police aren't trained to do that. Social workers and mental health workers are trained to do that. And so the sheriff and the Rochester Police Department has been very open and appreciative of mental health workers who ride with them. We also have workers at the jail to work out diversion from putting people in jail. And we have outreach workers, people who are out on the streets looking for people who are having mental health problems and need help. Oftentimes, when you're in that situation, it seems so bleak, you don't know where to ask for help, and you just kind of, you know, withdraw or act out. So all those ways we can help mental health workers.
Thank you. And Bucky Beeman, the county is working with partners to create a regional mental health crisis center, and it supports crisis teams as well as partnered outreach workers with law enforcement. What additional steps should the county take to address mental health concerns?
Thanks, Randy. So Commissioner Pedolkey hit on some very important topics. I think other areas I would like to see expanded is building the communication with the employers in Olmsted County. I think often they are at the front lines of seeing mental health crisis within the jobs that they're creating, within the workplaces that they're at. And so I think that's important. I think also we need to look at the property owners, because speaking from personal experience owning property, you do also see that when you're housing, helping house someone in a rental property. So how we can educate property owners so that they understand the resources that the county has, the staff that the county has. So then in turn, we can help people. And thirdly, I would say we just need to be out in the community more as county commissioners to really be reaching out to those that live, work, play here in this county, so they understand how they can reach out to us, how they can access the resources we know of, or the resources that we can put them in touch with.
All right. Next topic we're going to talk about, obviously, the county deals with the court system in this, in Olmsted County. And Olmsted County has established a drug court. Mr. Beeman, what are your views on creating additional specialty courts to address specific issues or specific populations in the county?
I'll be honest with you, I don't understand all the different court system intricacies at this level in my campaign, but I look forward to learning about more. I would say that if it's something that isn't going to slow down our court system, I think that's a concern that I hear often, is that it takes a long time to go through the court system, and it's not a very pleasant process. And so I don't want to slow it down. I also don't want to spend tax dollars improperly. And so I feel like we need to really listen to those that are in the courts, the judges. We need to listen to the public service legal professionals that are serving our county. And we need to understand, do they think it's important? Because if they think it's important, I'm definitely willing to help support it, but I can't make that decision alone.
All right. Stephanie Pedolkey, same question. There already is a drug court in Olmsted County. What are your views on creating additional specialty courts to address specific issues or populations in the county?
We are what's called a community corrections county. There's a handful of us, and it's growing. Community Corrections is separate from the Department of Corrections. So we make our own rules, but we then have to pay for it ourselves. And our community was willing to do that because Community Corrections is about restorative justice. So the drug court took a while to get through because it requires a lot of infrastructure organization, and it was expensive. We have already in place a wonderful family court. The next court, specialty court, was going to be veterans' court. And we decided we couldn't afford that at this time. And I think there's one out in Dodge County now that's working. And we'll keep our eye on that and see if we get more veterans and more people into Rochester who need veterans' court, we can set that up again. But the community does need to know it's a commitment financially for that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And Stephanie, again, what is the county's role in economic development, and how could the county fund increased efforts to attract and develop businesses locally?
We fund ready Rochester-area economic development and industry, something like that. And so that's one of the groups that we give money to because that's really their job. I don't know that Olmsted County needs to be attracting business. What we need to do is have in place for those businesses, housing, schools, health, public safety, so that, I think that's our way. It's a sort of sideways to attract businesses. If people know that when they come to Rochester, they'll find a place to live, their kids will go to school, the community is safe, we reflect diversity in our employment picture, we welcome people, and I think we have a lot to do, work to do with that. I'm not sure everyone feels welcome coming into Rochester. And so that's our job, to set that up so other people can attract businesses.
Thank you. And Bucky, what do you see as the county's role in economic development, and how could the county fund increased efforts to attract and develop businesses locally?
Thanks, Randy. Unlike Commissioner Pedolkey, I would say that we absolutely need to be working to attract businesses. If we're not growing, we're dying. And so ways we can do that is, one, sharing the great stories of success that are right here in our county. I think also we need to look at what is considered like cottage industries, industries that are ran out of homes, industries that are smaller, that people don't recognize within our county, and start bringing light to the great work that they're doing and finding ways that we can incentivize them. One way that they are often pushed down is through property taxes. And the county has a big role in property taxes. And so we need to find ways that we can help incentivize their growth, help them get to a point where they're becoming more successful. And we need to share the great news of the wonderful county that we have, because as a result of that, I think we will continually see our county grow and will diversify our economy. And that's extremely important for a long, healthy story for our county to be able to share. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the next question. We've already talked a little bit about homelessness and certainly other issues that are, home issues, if you will, that people here deal with. The 2019 Olmsted County Community Health Needs Assessment identified financial stress as one of the three top community health priorities. My guess is, if you add 2020 and COVID in that, financial stress is going to be very high for many, many county families. How do you propose the county address this financial stress issue?
There's many things that we need to be doing, and there's many things that the county is doing now. I'm happy to see rental assistance and the partnerships that they're working to help provide assistance to those that are in our county. I think that areas we need to look to is property taxes. That's affecting not only businesses, it's affecting households. I think we also need to look into fees set forth from different regulation-type bodies. You know, our county helps oversee the health and inspection department, I don't know the exact term, but for restaurants. And so we need to, as this industry is suffering, we need to find ways that we in turn can help this industry get through this time, because that specific industry provides a lot of jobs to our county. And it's extremely important that those that are being affected financially can get through this unprecedented time in this pandemic. So I'm committed to finding strategic ways and looking outside the box and bringing my years of experience to the conversation so that we all can get through this pandemic.
All right. Stephanie Pedolkey, the needs assessment identified financial stress as one of the top three health priorities in the county. And again, with COVID, probably rise to the top, I would think. And how do you propose the county address the financial stress issue?
We certainly are suffering economically. It's crushing for some families. I think we have to just put COVID aside for a minute. What we did for COVID was to help, certainly with rent. People had three months of rent help they could apply for through our HRA. We didn't want people to be evicted. We want people to stay home. But if we look outside of the problems with COVID, we have a strong workforce development education program here. We need to recruit people at RCTC. We need to recruit more people to come here. We teach, we have classes in budgeting. We have classes for people who want to have homeownership. Money management is a crucial part of getting along. And a lot of us maybe didn't have a lot of money growing up, so we never learned how to manage it. And so I think those kind of classes, the education part, is where Olmsted County helps.
I know I had trouble balancing my checkbook. Randy, last question.
All right. And we'll start with Stephanie. What, the county sheriff is an elected official who oversees his own department.
Yeah.
Is the role of the county commissioner, what is, is there a role for the county commissioners to play in encouraging changes to the way the department operates? And if so, what changes would you like to see made?
Yes, the sheriff is elected on his own. We control his purse strings, and that is can be a point of contention between us, and we have to watch over those things carefully. There's a thing that Bob Benzek taught me a long time ago, which is, there's never a piece of technology that the sheriff doesn't think will keep us safer. And so we have to weigh those things. Will this really be, is it something we want to invest in, like the cameras, the on-body cameras? And that was a very good thing to invest in. But there may be other things that we don't think are important enough for them to buy. And what, your question was, what can we do to make?
Well, what, is there a way to encourage changes? And also, what changes would you like to see made?
I'd like to see I'd like to see us change some of the requirements for being a peace officer and being a deputy. Maybe relaxing some of those requirements so that it would fit people who haven't had a chance to have such a formal education that they meet those requirements. I'd like to see scholarships as well for people, to encourage more hiring of diverse people.
Thank you. And Bucky, is there a role for the county commissioners to play in encouraging changes in the sheriff's department? And if so, what changes would you like to see made?
Thanks, Randy. I believe our sheriff's department is doing a wonderful job, and I commend them for going out every single day and helping protect and keep our community the best that it absolutely can be. And I think as a county commissioner, we are the front line of the connection to our community. And the community needs to recognize that they can reach out to us, and then as a result of that, we can help talk to the sheriff. And I think often individuals look at authority as intimidating, and depending on their background, they may not ever want to talk to them. And so as a result of that, we need to be in place to be open to those conversations. The things that I would like to see changed is diversity, and I think the sheriff would also agree with that. And one of the issues they have is just finding candidates to apply and get through the educational process. On the educational process, I'd like to see PSEO offered that would then encourage people to get into the sheriff's department, into law enforcement, that can start at the early age of high school. And also, I think we need to help them get through this pandemic as they aren't having the outreach that they once had going out to the neighborhoods. We need to help them through that process via technology, and I look forward to helping add to the conversation.
All right, we've come to the end of the forum today, and per the rules, first of all, let me say thank you for your willingness to serve and your willingness, and your service and your willingness to serve, of course. As per the rules, we're going to have the closing statements now. And because of the draw, Stephanie Pedolkey, you go first with your closing statement, please.
Okay, thank you. Well, this morning, I'm going to step out of my comfort zone to talk about myself. I hope you'll vote for a woman who started the first women's shelter, who helped start the Diversity Council, who co-chaired the first housing summit, and is appointed to advise the governor on children's mental health issues. I lobbied for years to convince the board to fully fund the HRA and to minimize teen tobacco use by passing T-21. I spent 15 years as an in-home family therapist to prevent out-of-home placement of children. I work best behind the scenes to set up good programs with dedicated and competent staff. Many of my creative new ideas are now county policy. If you want more of that, please honor me with your vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Robert, Bucky Beeman, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner Pedolkey, for your years of service, and thank you for the opportunity to just be able to run in this wonderful county. As mentioned, my name is Robert Beeman on the ballot, and I just look forward to continually helping our county be in a healthy place, helping lead our county into a place of change. I think that we need fresh perspective on the county commissioner board, and I think with my active role currently in the community and my continued desire to help this county out, I can do so. So I'm on the ballot because I'm looking forward to listening to you, I'm looking forward to being a part of the great county that has helped shape who I am as an individual and help my family. And I'm here to help our county get to that next level of leadership. Thank you for the opportunity, ABC and Post Bulletin, and let's go out and enjoy our weekend.
Yes, thank you very much, and good luck, both of you, on Election Day. And thank you, the viewers, for joining us today. Randy Peterson from the Post Bulletin, I think we got a lot of information out for people today, and hopefully, if they haven't voted yet, they can make a choice that's informed. And again, thanks for being with us today. You remember, these are going to be on our website and on the Post Bulletin website for some time, so if you missed anything today or you want to hear it back again, you can go back and check it. Again, have a great weekend.